Hey, John, how you doing?
Doing well, James, yourself?
Yeah, pretty good, thanks.
Good, you're 100% recovered?
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was only really sick for about three days, but it was, um, it was right when I was needing to get a bunch of stuff done and I couldn't really get tough stuff done. But yeah, I had, I actually had two COVID tests and they both came back negative. So, you know, one of those moments where you kind of, fingers crossed guessing, you know, you don't really know what to do, but I, I did end up quarantining for the, the recommended amount of time for showing some symptoms, but testing negative, so. Anyway.
Anyway, it's good to hear you're doing better.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, John.
Jack, how are you?
Good, how you doing, man?
No complaints, things are okay.
That's good, nobody's sick?
Thankfully, no.
Good for you, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
How are you doing, Jack?
How are you, James?
Hey.
Our older daughter had a positive test.
Oh.
Well, she never had symptoms and she, she did what she had to do. This was back at the beginning of January. And as it turned out, she had a follow-up test that was negative. So, thank goodness she's all right.
Good, glad to hear that. Good evening, Catherine.
Can't hear you yet, Jack.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, am I all right now?
I can hear you.
You can hear me?
Good evening.
I'm not all right, but you can hear me. Short meeting tonight, gentlemen, huh?
That's what we're told.
From your lips to God's ears.
Somehow, it never goes that way. Hey, James, are you there?
I'm here, yes.
I, I have just a quick question on the, the parking by the, where the Taylor Apartments people keep their vehicles?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, that's gonna become parking spaces, right?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to. Um, they will have-
The off-street, I'm just curious, because that's a pretty big lot where they keep all those cars.
Yeah, so they'll have, this is just for Phase One, so it's across the street where the two vacant towers are now.
Right.
Um, and they'll, they'll have a whole presentation. So I don't want to get too much into the details now without, you know, because we do have a quorum. I don't want to discuss the details of the project too much, but yes, they will, they'll go through the parking-
I was, I was just curious if that was the parking lot they were referring to in the paperwork, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mark?
I'm sorry.
Can we just introduce Mark Pelosi, who was joining-
Hello, Mark.
Yeah, I'm normally above you. Where, just like tic-tac-toe, come down one and over, Jack McCann is on the board.
It's like the Brady Bunch introductions.
And, uh, you know me, I'm up in the corner. And we have one more person we're waiting for.
Great.
And tonight, we only have the one case, so it'd be a nice, easy, uh, for you. What kind of law do you practice, Mark? Are you familiar with zoning at all or anything?
Yes, uh, I don't do it exclusively. I, I primarily handle criminal defense and special prosecutions, but, I do have a background. I used to work for an energy and developmental firm out in Syracuse, so, uh, we did quite a bit of development work for Pyramid, uh, the mall developer and some mining companies, so. I'm-
So you know something about-
Yeah, I haven't been to a ZBA meeting in quite some time, but, um,
Yeah.
I don't miss them.
Welcome aboard, Mark.
I'm riding a bike.
Mark, did you want to do any more of an introduction? I mean, I, I know you, you and Kathy, Kathy mentioned you guys are, are neighbors or something like that.
I walk by his house every night. He has exquisite decorations for the holidays.
Thank you. Um, yeah, anyone have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer them. I'm a pretty open book. But, um, yeah, no, I, uh, I'm glad to be here, happy to help. And, uh, like you indicated, this seems like a, a pretty straightforward, uh, first meeting for me, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Uh, we're, we'll also be reaffirming our votes from December, because I did not record the meeting. We are being recorded right now, just so I don't-
You did record them, James, but it just didn't work. Don't sound irresponsible.
Uh, I'll take responsibility for it, that's okay. But, yeah, yeah, so we'll just run through those votes and Mark, I don't think we'll have you vote at all, just because you obviously weren't there, so we'll just run through the four votes and I think they were all unanimous, so, it shouldn't be an issue. All right, I'm letting, I'm letting a couple of the applicants, um, in now, or members of the applicant team. We'll just give ourselves a couple more minutes. Good evening, Roger, how you doing?
Very good, James, how about yourself?
Yeah, well, thank you.
That's good to hear.
Samson, go lay down. Thank you. Sorry, folks.
Right.
The puppy's barking. I gotta put him in the bedroom in a minute if he doesn't relax. He doesn't like it in there. Likes to be amongst people.
Okay, one more minute and we'll be ready. Okay, at six o'clock, we'd like to start the meeting if we could, please. James, will you call the roll?
James? Bear with me, we're just, just a moment, let's see here. Letting Katie in now, so.
Oh, good.
Okay, Catherine Conroy.
Here.
John Normile.
Here.
Jack McCann.
Here.
Mark Pelosi.
Here.
And Katie McLaren.
Well.
Here.
Good. Okay, so our first and only case tonight is, um, ZBA 2021-001, the Taylor Apartments redevelopment Phase One, 125 River Street. Troy Housing Authority and Penrose Development seek area variances for setbacks, density, and parking to redevelop the Taylor Apartments. The applicant present?
Uh, yes. Hi, Roger Keating from the Chasen Companies, um, here tonight on behalf of Penrose and the Troy Housing Authority.
All right, and could I just say before you start, um, we, we'd like to, I, I know you probably want to give us the whole nine yards on the redevelopment, but if you could just zero in mainly on the three variances that we are, um, considering, because that's really all that we can address.
Understood, I'll, I'll keep just the overview extremely short, just so you can have a point of reference. That's, that's all.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Sure thing. Um, I'll, um, Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'll, I'll share my screen now if that's all right with you?
Sure.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, what did you say your name was again?
Sure thing, it's Roger Keating, I'm from the Chasen Companies, yep, and I do have with me the project architect, as well as, um, folks from Penrose and, uh, the Troy Housing Authority in case some other questions came up on that side of it.
Okay.
So, um, I'm gonna try this here now. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks, thanks, everyone. So, once again, Roger from Chasen. Just really big overview, um, this, this is the, um, Taylor redevelopment project. Um, we're seeking variances, um, as discussed, um, just previously, the project's located, um, right at the, um, base of the Congress Street Bridge along Ferry Street. Um, it's bound by River Street, First Street Alley, and Congress. Um, and in this, in this image that you see here, which would just be like a bigger overall vision plan, we're focused on the, um, piece of property that is on the west side of River Street. Just real quick, existing property has Taylor One and Two, the large buildings. Those will be removed as part of this project and those will be replaced with the new building that will be seeking the variance for, as it relates to, um, the density and the, um, the building setbacks. The setbacks revolve, um, around the, um, the fact that we do have property right-of-way frontage on four sides, which is a little unique. We have Congress Street to the north, River Street to the west, Ferry Street to the south, and First Street Alley on the east side, so bound by, um, uh, right-of-way, public right-of-way on all four sides. The redevelopment will remove Taylor One and Two, as I stated, um, previously. One, the last point of context, just so that you can see Ferry Street, the, the existing Taylor apartment buildings, and then the new Phase One development. And just briefly, as it relates to the parking component, um, the project will, um, have parking in the back of the prop, what we're calling the rear of the project. Um, it would be serviced off of First Street Alley. There'll be thirty-eight parking spaces in this rear parking lot, um, off of First Street Alley. Twelve of those spaces will actually be undercover, um, with the buildings, the building creates a bit of a canopy for it, um, so that they'll have twelve covered parking spaces. And so that brings us to the, the things that we're looking at for relief. Um, so, once again, we're looking for setback relief. Um, we have those right-oways on all four sides. Um, so it does create a little bit of a uniqueness here. Um, and also, we want to have the, um, the, the building right up along Congress Street there, um, that is consistent with, um, the city's, uh, comprehensive plan, um, also just looking to help, you know, recreate that urban streak scape in that downtown portion of the, of the project here where we're, where we, um, will have the, um, the new building. Unit density, so the existing Taylor buildings, as everyone probably knows, they're very tall, nine stories, there was a hundred and forty-three units in those. We are gonna be in the R5, um, we're, we're gonna be proposing a medium-rise building with eighty-five units, um, but that, we still do need to seek relief, but did want to have a point of reference as to what is there today with, with, um, a higher unit count. And then, as it relates to parking, the, um, existing parking out there is around thirty-four parking spaces that used to serve the, um, Taylor One and Two buildings. There was a hundred and forty-three of those units, um, with thirty-four parking spaces. We're proposing thirty-eight parking spaces for the eighty-five units. Um, and that parking count is, is very consistent with what the, um, Housing Authority, um, has and, um, uses for the existing, uh, Taylor, um, buildings. And the folks that live in the exist, some of the existing Taylor buildings will be, um, moved over into this building, um, upon its completion. So, and then I'll just leave it with the perspective view for everyone, so that you can see how that building sits forward right up on the Congress Street. Um, you know, which is, again, in that vision for that, that downtown. Um, the five-story building height, as I talked about previously, you'll see that that's very pronounced at the corner and then drops to four stories as you get closer to Ferry Street, so. Um, Madam Chair, with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to you, and if you would like me to stop sharing my screen, please just let me know.
Well, I, I just have the question, th- this is the way it's gonna look?
Yes.
Okay, and what's this street here? Oh, you can't see where I'm walking.
We're, it's okay, we're at the corner of River, Congress, River, River, that left is Congress.
So this is Congress, so Russell Sage is over-
It would be in the back, in the background, right, on your left-hand side going, um, you know-
You're, you're looking eastbound on Congress, correct?
Yes, you would be looking eastbound, okay, yes.
So where that traffic light is, you're go, you're heading to go over the Congress Street Bridge?
Um, that would be on the right-hand side of the page.
Yeah.
Um, yes, so that's the current ramp. You can kind of make out where that, that sports car is moving real fast. You can see the guide rail of the bridge a little bit in this image.
Okay.
Roger, there aren't gonna be any sports cars moving fast, though, right?
No, no, because what we really want to see is River Street be reconfigured. We don't want to get into all those pieces of it, but, um, you know, obviously, if we get River Street reconfigured, um, we'll have a much better traffic calming, we won't have people racing up that bridge anymore, and we reconnect our downtown, which is, this is exciting stuff. But that's a different, a different topic elsewhere.
Right. Okay, but I just wanted the, uh, the idea of where exactly, this is a very impressive-looking, um, rendering, shall we say, of the building.
Yes. That are architects on.
Go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, the architect is on, I can't take credit for this one, they did an amazing job on this building and the rendering just looks, looks great.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, um, both, uh-
Oh, John.
Yes, uh, both, John and I are here and we, uh, we-
You want to be the architect?
Yes.
Well, it's a beautiful building.
Thank you, thank you.
So-
And you're, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, Madam Chair, Roger, I was just hoping you can speak to the, the phasing really briefly. Um, you know, we want to acknowledge that this is an independent project, but I, I'd like the, the ZBA just to understand what, what we mean when we say Phase One.
Sure, um, thank you. I, again, I didn't want to get into the weeds unless it was asked. Um, so I'm back on the first slide, and if you can see my cursor, um, where we were talking about previously was the Phase One area, which is that, that River Street east side. Um, you know, and basically, the, the, the bigger overall vision, um, of the downtown area here is, it starts with this building, um, but then it continues on with the reconfiguration of River Street and the Congress Street Bridge, so that we can reconnect the, the River Street, um, reconnect River Street to the north and side of Ferry, which was, was the case, uh, many years ago, but when, uh, the Congress Street Bridge was actually on Congress Street. We're gonna look as part of the bigger picture, that intersection then would be, um, the ramps would go away, so that's James's reference to the elimination of the sports car going fast, we'd have a nice intersection there. And then, with those ramps going away, it really sets the stage for the next phases of the project down the road to then, you know, um, redevelop that, um, that, that waterfront there, um, with the, with the Taylor properties. Um, and that's, that's the, the bigger piece that you see here. Um, but we're really excited about this project, um, and, and what it means to the downtown, especially getting River Street connected, hopefully, um, you know, reconnected, I should say, um, because it is, it is somewhat severed right now with the, with the overpass.
So again, just to clarify, these are three separate, well, th- this Phase One is a separate project from the other two structures being shown in this rendering, but I, I do want the board just to understand, um, that, that difference, right?
Yes, it is, this is, this is independent of those, obviously, um, Congress Street, River Street would need to be reconfigured for anything to happen to this magnitude opposite, uh, opposite it.
Uh, does anybody from the board have any, well, maybe I should ask first, well, no, we'll go with the board first. Anybody from the board have any questions they want to ask at this point? Jack, you had a question maybe earlier, or it was an answer, or what?
Yeah, it was just about the parking, uh, Kath, I'm familiar, very familiar, obviously, with my other life about Taylor Apartments and that space. And I was just curious if that was the parking spots that they were referring to, and James answered that question.
Okay, so, all right, so you're done. Does anybody else have any questions?
I do.
I-
Katie?
Um, I'm just wondering about the, um, the residents who are moving while this work is being done. Do they then get to move back into this building, or does, do they have to go about, you know, applying for it the way they probably had-
So, so Taylor One, Taylor One and Two, the buildings that are being removed right now are all vacant. There's no, but there's no tenants in there that's been vacant for a number of years. Um, the, 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 so this, those buildings would be removed, there's no, there's nobody being displaced from that. And actually, when the new structure is, um, is built, um, folks, I believe from Taylor, um, Three and Four would, um, move over into, um, this new, this new building, so they wouldn't be, there's, there's nobody being, uh, displaced or anything like that as part of the project, uh, from that. And construction can happen completely independent of, of, of impacting them over in, in their existing residents.
Okay. Okay, and so the, the entire building will not, no longer be, um, the affordable housing, is that correct? It says only sixty-four of, um,
Yeah, I, I believe, I, I believe that's the case. I, Lee, I believe is on the call, um, from Penrose, and we also have, um, Tom from the Housing Authority. Can you, can you guys, to one, can one of you just help me confirm the, the, the unit breakdown on that?
Roger, I, and I'll go ahead.
Thanks, Tom. Just introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. Uh, it's Tom Hullahan, Troy Housing Authority. The, uh, phasing is going to be, One and Two will come down, a building will be built there, a phase, Phase One, the Phase One building. There are sixty-four occupied units in Taylor Four. Those tenants will relocate to the new, newly completed Taylor Phase One building.
Okay.
And then they remain- Pardon me?
Well, if those sixty-four go into the new building, and the new building has the eighty-five units, who are the other, um, twenty-one?
The twenty-one will be other, uh, tenants that qualify for affordable or working-class housing, or maybe market-rate housing.
Okay.
And after four is vacated, that will be torn down, and new building will be built there, the one that you see in the picture. And the tenants from Taylor Three will move into there.
Okay.
And that building will be torn down, and a new building will be built at the-
So the entire project is, will, will be affordable housing?
It'll be a mix of affordable and other tiers of housing.
Okay.
All of the affordable tenants that are in the Taylor Apartments will be accommodated.
Okay.
And what is the timeframe for this whole thing?
Lee is more-
Or Roger, or somebody?
Lee is more proficient in that. We applied this year for, uh, tax credits, hoping to get an award. We would start demolition, uh, mid-year of this year, and construction immediately following. We'd begin occupying Phase One in early two thousand and twenty-three, while simultaneously working towards, uh, starting the subsequent phases.
Okay. So, I don't know, three, four, five years or something like that?
That sounds right.
By the time it'll be all said and done?
Yes.
Uh, is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this proposal? I don't know, maybe we should, should we, um, unshare the screen? So we're all, is that better? Um, oh, Andy's here with time. Um, okay, so nobody else here to speak in favor? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
I can't imagine.
Okay, pardon me?
I can't imagine there would be.
Yeah, there, nobody else is here, so do we have any, uh, any other questions of the applicant, members of the board? Uh, John?
In the rendering that we saw, it appeared, uh, that the first floor had, uh, a lot of glass in the first floor, is that for retail, or was that just the lobby?
Yeah, so, so the, the, again, I don't want to speak as the architect for sure on this, but, um, but the, the, um, the intent is, is to create a lot of storefront appeal, you know, as it, you know, from the downtown perspective. And the, the use is on the, the main floor, there's recreational spaces for the tenants in there. There's, um, there's some office spaces for the, the, um, the, the Housing Authority folks, you know, that, that work in the building. And there's a small community facility on the first floor as well, um, that's right off of the, which would be off of Congress Street. So, um, John, I didn't misspeak as it relates to those, correct?
You got it perfectly right.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that I'm clear, i- it's not being built for first-floor retail, it was-
There, there is some, there is some ground floor space on, uh, on the Congress Street side, uh, that may be, it's a tenant, it's a, about a eleven-hundred-square-foot tenant space. That could be a community center, it could be, uh, small retail, we're not quite sure what that tenant is gonna be, but it's, um, it's separate from the residential occupancy.
Do we have any other questions? Or are we ready to, uh, vote?
Yeah, I just want to-
Good evening, it's Andy Brick, how are you? Um, a couple of things, I, I don't think you've believed, I don't believe you've opened it up to the public at large yet.
I did, didn't I? Asked if anybody was here to speak against or for.
Okay, I just heard in favor, but if you went both ways, that's great. Um, the Planning Commission is also reviewing this application, um, and has declared themselves lead agency under Seeker. Um, it is a Type One action, uh, the Planning Commission has not yet made a seeker determination. because this board is an involved agency, but Seeker, the Seeker lead is the Planning Commission. This board can't take any final action on the application until such time that the Planning Commission issues a negative declaration. So, you absolutely have the ability to close the public hearing this evening, but you would have to reserve decision until the Planning Commission makes a secret determination and then you can take final action on the variance request.
And when did we anticipate they're gonna do that?
I, I, I think within the next few meetings, they, they've seen this a few times. Yes, I think within the next one or two meetings, they will be back before the Planning Commission.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Within the next couple of meetings, which would be, we're in February now, so we'd be good talking March or April before it goes to the Planning Commission again for approval and then they gotta approve it before they, so they might not be back to us till May.
That's correct, the earliest that this project will be heard by the Planning Commission would be March. Planning Commission meets next week and this application is not on that agenda.
This sounds like a lot of bureaucratic, you know. It's very unfortunate, I think, for the applicant, I mean, it's probably nothing we can do about it, but I think we can, I don't understand why, you know what I mean? We have to go back and back and back, it's like trying to get a vaccine, taking forever.
Was the applicant aware of this?
My understanding is they are.
Okay.
Roger, you were aware, Tom?
The, the, the only thing I wasn't sure of was, would there be any ability for them to do it, Andy, to do any sort of conditional type of scenario? Can they make an action with conditions that, you know, that the planning board, you know, upon final approval type of thing? Or how would they work that, or is that not possible?
The, the, the simple answer is no, they can't, they can't take any type of final action. What they can do is give you an informal opinion or a poll of the board of where they think the likely end result will be when they do have the ability to take final action, as well as give you any direction that, you know, board members feel you, you may want to be prepared to respond to when you do return, but they can't take any official action, even with conditions, Seeker prevents it.
Even with the condition, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, but the Planning Commission was hoping that the, the ZBA would, would arrive at today is, is a, a recommendation, I guess, that the Planning Commission proceed with, with their, their review. If, if the ZBA has any, any comments about the layout or design or wishes to see any site plan changes, this would be, well, prior to the next Planning Commission meeting would be the time to communicate that to the, to the commission.
And who is this sitting behind the city emblem there, who just spoke?
That's Aaron Vera, City Engineer.
Oh, okay, well, your name isn't on there, just the logo for the city. Um. All right, have, have, has the applicant been before the planning board yet at all?
Yeah, the Planning Commission has reviewed this at the concept level twice, I believe. The, the applicant did present some more detailed architectural renderings that, that you saw this evening at the Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-eighth, January. And currently, we are in possession of a complete set of site plan documents along with all of the engineering reports and we're just awaiting a third-party engineering review on that package.
Okay, and so, they can't go before the planning committee, uh, commission in February? So, they can't, the earliest they can go then would be, would be March to the Planning Commission, correct?
Correct, and then, and then assuming that everything is in order and the Planning Commission is able to act the soonest that you guys would be able to act would be your April meeting.
Correct, okay, but I know if there's a snag at that planning commission meeting, then we're moving another month ahead, but perhaps there won't be a snag.
That's, that's correct, there's also a lot of other moving parts, as I'm sure Tom can attest that, you know, that, that this, this project is on schedule, I, I believe, as far as everyone's concerned.
Yes.
So, you're all right, I mean, well, there's nothing we can do about it anyway, but. Okay, so then, we heard it and if we close, we did close, we can close the public portion, formally speaking, so then the next time they come back, all we have to do is read the name of the case and vote.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
So, do we want to do kind of an informal poll, just to, to give the applicant an idea where we stand?
Well, I mean, we can do that if we want, I personally have no problem with any of it. So, if that's informal, is that considered informal enough? You know what I mean, like, as, we're not voting, so I, I.
Well, how about, how about if we make, if we propose that the Planning Commission move forward with the review at their next available spot? Which kind of gives the, you know, which kind of assumes that that means that we are on board with the whole project.
That, that's perfectly acceptable, because that would be a recommendation, which wouldn't constitute an action under Seeker, so you would have the ability to do that by resolution.
So, then let's do that, is the gonna do, they're gonna do what they are gonna do, but we'll be on record as saying that we're recommending. Do we have to do that by a voice vote or just a group vote? Andy?
I, I think group is fine, as long as it's unanimous, if it's not, we can figure out what is.
So, Madam Chair, I move that, ZB twenty twenty-one zero zero one, that the board recommend the Planning Commission move forward with their review of this case based on our, you know, anticipated approval.
Good one, Katie, I like it, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
John Normile seconds? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry, okay, so that's where we are with that right now, right?
Okay.
Okay.
I believe that, I believe that's all we can do then, Andy, correct? Just, just with the recommendation back to the, the planning board at this point.
Yeah, that, that's, I, I mean, I, I would suggest if the ZBA members have anything specific or concerns that they may have flagged during this presentation that they may want to see addressed in April, to give you a heads-up while we're all here. But I got the sense they, they were pretty much viewing it favorably and they didn't have any particular comments they wanted you to address, but I'd leave it to that.
Yeah, I, does anybody have anything that they would like the developer to address before they come back, hopefully in April?
I do not.
Okay. So, none of us do or we're all set? Okay, so, good luck with the Planning Commission, I hope it all works out.
Great, thank you very much.
And we'll see you again in April, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, an excellent-looking project to me. Okay, now, the only other thing we have to do tonight is re-vote on the cases we heard in December, because there was a malfunction of the recording and there is no recorded vote. Now, my first question, or my only question, James, before we move forward with this, is you said something about the four cases, but I only have three here.
Yeah, it's actually just two, because the first case.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask you that, the first one is, was a table.
That one was removed, it was removed from the agenda prior to the meeting, so it's cases seventy-four.
We didn't table it.
This case is seventy-four and eighty-five, it's two oh five Oakwood Avenue, a use variance for the dog daycare facility.
Dog daycare facility, yeah.
The board voted unanimously to approve that, we don't have Gary here, so I'd like, I'd like to just run through those again quickly.
Okay, now we just, now four of us will vote and Mark will not vote, because he wasn't here for the presentation, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so we have ZB twenty twenty zero zero seventy-four, two oh five Oakwood Avenue, a use variance, Kristen Koenig seeks a use variance for a dog daycare facility in an R1 zone. And what we have to do now is vote, right, Andy?
Yeah, I believe, my recollection was they were both Type Two actions, so it would just be voting on the merits for both.
Right, did you actually remember? Wow. Okay, on the, on the case, John Normile?
I vote to approve.
Okay, Katie McLaren?
I vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve.
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, and the next case is ZBA twenty twenty zero zero eighty-five, or zero eighty-five, St. Peter's Parish Complex at Fifth and Hutton. Area variances, Michael and Lynn Hamley seek area variances to increase the units in an existing structure, six existing units, eight proposed in an R4 zone. Was there something else that went along with that about the parking or something in the end? Or did we just vote on the, on the units? We, I know we had conversation about the whole thing.
I recall a discussion about the parking lot across the street, but that those spaces were not gonna be included in that application?
But.
That's my recollection.
Yeah, I think we talked about it, but basically, though, we only were to address the increasing of the units, right?
Right, right, what I remember is the applicant saying that they could potentially come back and, and develop that site later on, so that they did not want to include that parking lot.
Right, so we did have a rather lengthy discussion about the whole thing, but in the end, when we voted, John Normile? Do you remember? How you voted?
I, I, I recall voting yes to approve.
Okay, Katie McLaren?
Um, yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve.
Okay, thank you all, sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right.
This one is recorded, so.
So, we're all set, so Mark, do you think you'll come back next month?
I think, I think I'll be back.
Okay, good, all right, and this is Katie, by the way, Katie McLaren, Mark Filazzi.
Hi, Katie.
Yes, he's just joined us this evening. So, with that, do we have a mo, and no further business, right?
That's it.
So, we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second from John Normile, on favor, aye. Now, we can just leave, right, sorry, James. Bye.
Thank you.
Mark, nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Good to meet you, Mark, next time we'll let you vote.